You are watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
Is it on now? We're good? Okay, we're gonna make a motion for the minutes on March 20th to approve the minutes for March 20th.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the regular meeting minutes of March 20th. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Make a motion to for the non-public meeting on March 20th.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Make a motion for the special meeting on March 26th.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye.
And a motion for a non-public meeting on March 26th.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Anything further, Michael?
No, nothing. Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public input. Seeing none. Anything online, Garrett?
Just that.
Okay. We'll go to the penning ceremony for Sergeant Kevin Clark. Chief.
Captain.
Aye.
Thank you for letting us have this ceremony here today. The penning ceremony is a very old, longstanding ceremony, very brief however. Basically, it's done at many agencies across the United States, and it's a privilege to do it here today. There's basically two events for penning ceremonies. One is when someone becomes a police officer, and the second is when someone gets promoted. Today is a promotion. Very happy to announce that Kevin Clark's going to be our new sergeant. Matter of fact, Kevin was remote, front and center. Kevin has an associate's degree in criminal justice. He's a war veteran, served in the United States Army. He's been with the Swansea Police Department for 11 years now. Previous to that, he worked in Winchester. So he's got quite a bit of experience. He also has two additional duties. One is range officer, firearms instructor, also a field training officer. For the last several months, he's been affiliated with detectives, which has been a great help for us, and also working the road. So, the ceremony will consist of the oath, and also the penning. Madison's girlfriend's here for the penning, but we'll do the oath first. Raise your hand. Aye, Sergeant.
Aye, Kevin Clark.
Do solemnly swear that.
Do solemnly swear that.
I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a full-time sergeant.
As a full-time sergeant.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Of the Swansea Police Department.
Of the Swansea Police Department.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of the state of the nation.
And the laws of the state of the nation.
Very good. Madison, can you come up and do the penning?
Congratulations, Captain.
Thank you.
Have a blush.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That was nice. I want to get a pen someday. Thank you, guys.
Stay safe.
Thank you very much.
All right, our first appointment is State Representative Jennifer Rhodes, Legislative Update.
Well, hello, everybody. Thank you. Thank you for having me. Congratulations, Mr. Selectman.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Good to see you.
Very nice to see you always. I even got my new name tag.
You do. Congra-- I'm so excited for you.
Thank you.
A lot of pressure.
Yeah.
A lot of pressure.
He knows that now.
So, for those of you that don't know, I'm Representative Jennifer Rhodes. I represent Cheshire County District 17, which is Winchester, Richmond, Swansea, Troy, and Fitzwilliam. This is my second term, and I serve my constituents by sitting as the Vice Chairman of the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee. Everything we hear is controversial, and nobody's ever happy, but we do the best we can. And one of the things I would say that is a lot different this term than last term is there's, you know, so the House is so evenly divided that every single committee is equal Republicans and Democrats on the committee. So there's not a majority of anybody, and pretty much, I would say, 60 to 70 percent of the bills that we are bringing out of the committee are on the consent calendar. So it doesn't necessarily sound like that big of a deal until you realize that means 18 or more people are all agreeing on the same thing on probably the most contentious committee that you can have as far as controversy goes in the House. So we're actually very, very proud of that. The ones that are coming out that are not agreed upon, most of the time are coming out with what's called no recommendations, so we all agreed that we couldn't agree. So, you know, at the end of the day, there was that. So, you know, obviously, we discuss a lot of firearm bills come to the committee. You name it, we've discussed it. And changes are probably pretty good. We didn't agree on it, except for the few that we did. There was a couple that were just, quite frankly, nonsense, and we did away with those bills. But, so being this is the second half of the year, you know, we already passed the budget. The budget that we passed was actually something to be proud of. It was the first time in history that the New Hampshire House of Representatives passed a budget on a voice vote, and that was that. I mean, it was quite impressive, and quite frankly, there was something in there for everybody. And the things that we weren't all necessarily happy with, we went back and worked on amending those as we went along. So there was that. You guys had talked to me briefly on and off about the expenses that you were having with the coverbridges with the images that were done. And last year, when I was here, the committee that we had versus the committee this year, I did not think there was any prayer of getting any kind of bill through that had anything to do with a camera, right? I was like, "Good luck. Good luck to you. Good luck to you. Good luck to you. I don't see it happening." Well, there's egg all over my face, because not only did we pass it on the Criminal Justice Committee, we passed it on the consent calendar.
Because, say, you said nothing was-- everything was controversial, but that somehow was not, so...
That one, I did take some phone calls afterwards, that I handled those where I am. But we did put an amendment onto the bill. One of the things that was brought up was, you know, in order to be able to keep the integrity of the pictures that people were taking, right? Because it, obviously, these are-- they're historical, and they're photo ops, no matter how you look at it. So we did put an amendment on it that said, "Hey, let's at least let people know that there very well could be a camera," but we made it be 100 feet back from the bridge so that it's not going to be in the person's picture, but yet they're still able to be notified, hey, that there, you know, there could be a camera in use. And I don't think that the Senate passed it yet. I don't think that they had their executive session on it yet, but I did go testify on behalf of the Selectmen at the committee, and I know Michael was there as well that day. It seemed to go well. I did have to leave to get back to another, over to the Senate, but I do believe that, I don't really see any anticipation with it, so we'll wait and see. The other bridge bill did not come to our committee. There was some talk that it maybe was going to come to our committee as a second committee because of the violation or the penalty that was with it, but we haven't gotten it. So I don't know if it went to another committee, or it just didn't go to a second committee at all. I really don't know whatever happened with that one, so... But the first one, to be able to at least put the camera, looks like we might be able to get that passed for you. So there's that.
What was the second one?
The second one, I think, was... Hold on, don't tell me. I think it was about weight limits, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right?
Well, kind of. It was about increasing the fines that can be allowed if someone is overweight or oversized or has something in tow. Currently, I think the fines, because it's just considered a violation, not following a traffic sign. So it's like a $68 fine or something, so it would increase the fines possible. And it went to the Transportation Committee initially, and I don't know if it went to a second committee.
Yeah, I thought that it was going to come to our committee because of the fine portion of it. That's usually what will determine if something comes in criminal justice or not, but I haven't seen it, and we're on the Senate bills now. So, as a matter of fact, we were supposed to be there today, and I called and said, "Hey, it already picked me now. I'm happy to get home. If we're gonna have freezing rain, I really don't want to spend any comfort, so let's just call it a day and meet next week." So, but we are on the Senate bills, and I haven't gotten it, so I'm going to assume that we probably waived it. So we just were like, "No, we don't really need to hear about the bills, because the transportation took care of it." So I'll keep you posted on it. I haven't, I don't think we're getting it, unless, I can't imagine judiciary would have gotten it. My guess is they probably just waived it away, and that was that. So there's that. There were some things that were in the budget that might be of interest, being the rural areas that we all live in. We did put an exemption for noise ordinances for people that do farm work. Apparently, that, you know, that was an issue, but that wasn't actually part of the budget. That was actually a bill that was passed. And, you know, one of the things that we often talk about when I go to the Selectmen to, you know, talk about what's happening in Concord, one of the big driving forces that I have in the Criminal Justice Committee is being a very strong voice for victims of domestic violence or sexual violence of any sort, and basically victimhood in general. So, last term, I sponsored and was able to pass a bill that was going to increase the penalties for invasions of privacy. So basically, you know, it starts out as an example like a pee-pee pong, right? And then when that increases, because it starts small, like, oh, not that big of a deal, and then it quickly escalates to where it's detrimental effects. So we passed that to be if you're a repeat offender for invasion of someone's privacy, it's going to be felony. So this year, so again, last year, we passed another bill to make just invasions of privacy in general to be more egregious of crimes, but when we passed it, we didn't think to put any kind of a clause for children. And you really wouldn't think you'd have to until you do. And I was contacted by the Coalition, and they explained that there was a mother that contacted them, and she had had a long-term boyfriend for years, and apparently, and this is not a secret, this is, you know, public knowledge, apparently, the boyfriend was secretly recording the 12-year-old while she was shopping. And it's disgusting is that it's, it is unfortunate that it kind of fell through every crack as far as what would be, you know, what would be the actual crime that was caused, right? What are they going to charge this man with? So because it wasn't being shared, it wasn't considered child pornography, because there was no kind of gratification on her part, you know, it wasn't considered to be sexual in nature, and because it wasn't being recorded, because there was no actual sound, it wasn't like an invasion of, like, a recording. So that fell through every crack you can imagine. So fortunately, they were able to find something to, you know, be able to charge an individual with, but looking at that, we realized that we actually have to change that law. So I did put a bill in to make it be a felony, a Class B felony, if the person that you are victimizing is a child, and it will be a, so it's a Class B felony right off the bat. If it's a repeat offense, as we did before with the invasions of privacy, or if you're bringing that crime with you where you've already been charged in another state, it'll be a Class A felony, right? Or just right off the bat, a Class B felony. So we passed that on. The consent calendar, Criminal Justice Committee got it through the House, got it through, then it had to go to the Finance Committee, got it out there, and now it's over in the Senate, and I suspect that it'll pass out of the Senate as well. So hopefully, it'll pass, and I'll be good to go with that one, because that one made me lose a little bit of sleep. And there's a couple other bills that I've been following that, one that I really am a little bit, just a little bit disturbed by. In theory, I understand the theory. It's supposed to be a good thing, but I see some deadly, literally deadly unintended consequences with it. So we passed House Bill 470, and it's meant to be a harm reduction measure. So last year, we passed a bill, or actually, this term, but last year, we passed a bill for harm reduction for test strips for joint use, right? And the theory behind it is that, you know, hey, you may be intending to buy drugs, but you're not intending to buy a particular drug, and if that drug is in there, and it's, right, it kills you, like, pretty much instantly. So we passed the bill for these harm reduction measures. Okay. So then they come along, and they say, "We're going to pass this other bill," and they're saying that, again, I understand the theory behind it, I just don't agree with the end result, that now 10 milligrams of an unknown substance, this passed the House, and the Senate has it, is now basically 10 milligrams of an unknown substance so that it can be used to test the drug. But they're saying that this is what's left over after the drugs have been consumed, so that if a person chooses to test them, like, I'm not sure why you'd be testing them after the drug was already taken, but at the end of the day, you know, car fentanyl is 100 times more deadly than fentanyl. Two milligrams of fentanyl is considered a deadly dose, so the way this bill is written, that was 100 lethal doses of this car fentanyl that somehow passed. That's okay, because it was sold under harm reduction. So I made it my personal mission to have the Senate police kill that bill. And, you know, all the police departments that showed up to testify for it, they're telling us that how they see this to be, this is a deadly unintended consequence, and obviously, that's irreversible. So basically, what I asked the Senate was, "Look, the very people, the very people that we are tasking to enforce the laws that we pass are telling us that this is just grossly underestimated of the consequences that this is going to have." And I suspect that the Senate is going to kill that bill, but they have not done that yet. So I'm very, very, very hopeful that they do. And like I said, we did pass a bill last year that actually does have harm reduction measures in it, so, you know, we'll see where that goes. I'm not really sure exactly, but I'm a little bit horrified by that. For the whole internet world to see, I don't like it. And I don't have, I mean, there's a whole lot of stuff that was passed overall. I don't want to take up forever of your time, but, you know, like always, I have a little list here for you that might be, that might be particular helpful to you. I know last year when I came, you know, we had very specifics on money that was, you know, for infrastructure and, you know, like noise ordinance and school budgets and all of that. Most of that was put into the budget this time. So I don't really have anything that's very particular to the rural areas, you know, other than the bill that you guys, you know, advocated for. If you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them, please.
Did the funding for the retirement system, okay, tack down like it was supposed to, or...
No. My understanding is, so there was money for, like, EMT, firefighters, I believe. That did not, that I do not believe passed. And then there was actually a motion to do a way of it all together, because it wasn't, it was not going to be beneficial to the firemen. And I know there was actually a gentleman that made a motion to indefinitely postpone the bill, because it was going to be incredibly harmful to those particular departments. The one thing that I do know, we did hear a bill last week that had to do with retirement, so hear me out. Here's my problem that I have. I was not in the legislature whenever they said, "Hey, look, this is how much money we're going to give the towns for retirement." And where I struggle with every time these bills come is Swansea, small town, right? Very little employees. Troy, even smaller, what, six or seven employees. Same thing with Fitzwilliam, small, small, small. And there is not anything that says how many employees any town is allowed to employ, right? So, you know, if Troy decided to turn around tomorrow and hire 30 employees, well, that's on Troy, right? You want to hire 30 employees, you own that. So the problem that I have, the way the retirement bills are written, is essentially, people like Troy, people like Swansea, are now helping to fund however many employees the city of Nashville has, right? That's my problem. I'm like, "Wait a minute. Whoa, whoa, whoa," because it's the same thing as Park. It also goes into the school system, right? So if you have a school that if they want to have however many employees they wish to have, that's their budget that says it's okay to do that. So, but then in the state retirement, we're saying that the state is going to pay X amount of dollars for retirement when there is no way, there is no way to say how many employees a town is or isn't allowed to have. That is my struggle, and it is a big one, because I'm like, "Oh, dear God. I don't represent Nashville." Right? I don't even want to know how many employees they have at their town hall, but I suspect it's a lot more than we have at ours. So the last time I was here, there was money. I remember you helped me understand it a little bit, because I was a little bit confused by it, and...
There was a one-time payment. I don't remember if that was last year or the year before, but it was...
Last, I should say, last term. I always get this a little bit confused. I know it was last term.
Okay.
This year, I know something passed the House, and I do remember being a little bit nervous the way it was written, which, like I said, was going to be. There was no determination of how much it was going to be for however many employees a town had. We passed, something went through last week that passed that's going to be decided. It might be along these lines, but I don't remember what bill it was.
A little bit of background. I don't know all the history, but my understanding is there were multiple small retirement systems that some towns had participated in, and the state decided they were going to bring them all under the New Hampshire Retirement System. And the law at that point, part of the deal was to incentivize, was that they were going to pay 35%, which is my understanding. It's still the law.
Okay.
And then that got whittled down over time until the 2008, 2009 recession, it got zeroed out.
Okay. Well, that makes a little bit more sense than we've ever necessarily explained. I do know there was, last Thursday, when we were in session, there was a retirement bill that came up, and I have to say that the gentleman making the case why we should not pass it, I've certainly heard their arguments. He had said that, God help us, he said that it was, that the retirement problem was fixed because it was fixed by making the employees pay it. And I was like, "I don't really think that's what they meant by fix it." But he was pretty adamant that that was the solution to it. But I do believe it did pass the House. I believe that it did, and it's going to go to the Senate, so... But it may be one of the little, you know, the little pieces that they kind of, that they carved out. Unless it came out on the consent calendar, like, I don't know exactly, like, those ones by far, but I do know we looked it on something last week. But I'll make a note, and I'll follow up and see what that one was, because I probably have it over there in my little notebook. I'll look up and see what it was, and I'll know.
And the other thing that frequently has been happening is making it more and more restrictive for retirees to work, which is problematic for smaller towns. If someone, say, retires out of Keene and want to be a part-time police officer or firefighter for Swansea, it's gotten stricter and stricter how many hours they can work. For a lot of positions, we're fortunate, but a town like Troy or Winchester, they might want to hire a part-time, say, police chief or fire chief that retired out of a larger agency, but the state is making that harder by continuing to make it restrictive. They have to now have a gap in service before they can start working for another agency, so...
I, that I am familiar, we're familiar with that. So if you remember my first term, when we were at the, when we were between the first and the second biennial, I was promoted over to be the Vice Chairman of EDNA, which I am so glad I'm not there anymore. So I was on both committees for that brief time, if you remember that. And one of the bills that we did hear at that time was about letting it be easier for people that were, especially for police officers that were retired, to be able to work more hours. And I do remember that the, I believe, I believe that that went out pretty, you know, like, at 18 to 2. They killed the bill, and the concern was that people that were working the, not the special duties. Help me out. What is it called?
You sure? Details, is that...
Yes. Yeah. So if a person was working details, they could be retired with getting the detailed jobs, so they're not necessarily, they're not paying anything in the retirement system, but now they're going to be taking money out of the retirement system. And generally speaking, the detailed jobs pay more money. So they were saying, "Look, they're taking away the money job from the guy lower on pole, but they're not actually putting anything into the retirement system," and that was the reason why they killed it. Whether it's right or wrong, don't necessarily know. I'm not the one that's dealing with that problem, right? But I do know that towns are struggling with that. But that was the reason that EDNA voted to not pass that bill, was because of the money that would be, there would be no money going into the kitty. However, they would be working those jobs that were paying more money, meaning the lower guy isn't paying into it as well. So they looked at it like it was going to be a negative effect. And I don't think that it came back to shore. If it did, it would have gone to EDNA.
It's a lot to keep track of.
Yeah. It's like, yeah, it's most, I do try really hard to keep track of the police stuff, especially just because of the criminal justice. But I just remember that one, because I was over there whenever it came back last year. And I also had a very good friend who's an officer in Troy ask me to write the bill, and I was like, "Please don't do that to me." Like, I just don't, I just don't want to see you going. I just don't want to see you going anywhere. But when I explained it like that, he understood it. Didn't agree with it, but he understood it, which I think, I think that's just really the reality where it comes down to, unless they do something about it. I know there's been talk about, like, the physical fitness test. That one was ugly. I was on the, I don't know if you might help, right, if you're all inside of that? Because all of them, they do have their goods and their bads, right? And it's just trying to find that happy compromise somewhere in the middle that everybody can agree with. When you have half, so half of the people came that, you know, work for, that work for, like, for the training academy, and then the other half came that were just regular, they were just officers. If I had four people in the room, which I did at one point, two said yes and two said no, right? There, and that was straight under the budget, so I said, "Look, let's just, let's just, we can't do anything with it the way, clearly, it's not right the way it is. It's just not." I mean, honest to God, I had four officers in the room, and two of them, they couldn't agree. Plus, the people in the committee were the same way. We have retired officers in the committee that were also equally as divided. I'm like, "Okay, it's not ready. It's not ready for prime time. Clearly, we have to figure it out." So I told them, "Go back to drawing board, but you're done. Bring it back next year, see what happens." Hopefully, I'll be there next year, if you'll mind.
You can campaign.
I feel like I spent my life on that. Yeah, I will check on the retirement for you, and I will...
You don't have to necessarily check, but I just wanted to provide at least my perspective.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I'll leave this for you.
Are you getting any feedback on the land use bills that are coming through reducing lot sizes and increasing density?
Yes. We voted on the bill last week, actually voted on two. They both passed the House and are going to go over to the Senate. The one was a little bit, in my opinion, it was a little bit frightening, because it wasn't saying, it didn't matter what the lot size was. So it was saying the existing structure, and then I think it was allowing for two additional...
Peas.
Right. So basically, three on regardless of what size it was. So I go, "That can be a little bit horrifying," but they all passed.
Does the town have the ability to step in and make sure that the septic is capable of handling it? Or is this just coming down from the state?
I think it was coming down from the state. I think... I think it was coming down from the state.
So, it wouldn't be addressed until the system failed?
Yes, yes. And if I'm, I'm pretty sure I have that in my, over my little pad over there, because I remember writing that, like, there was, there was nothing about infrastructure, or police department, or fire, or even nothing. There had, it had nothing, didn't say anything about any of the things you would look at whenever you'd go in front of a planning board or zoning board. It was just basically coming down from the state, saying that was what it meant about it. Like, in my opinion, that completely did away with the whole way that New Hampshire's supposed to be drawn, which is let the town decide what the town wants, and it was just completely ripping that away. Some people, I was at a meeting on Monday, there was a gentleman from Branch, he said, well, I voted for it because, he said, it was, you know, closest to the person, and a woman said, what, so you don't believe in local control? And he said, no, I do, but I believe that, I went right with the person, but he also said, well, I believe that was right. And one of the things I, I really, really try very hard to say, this isn't about me, this isn't about me. There's a, there's a lot of votes that I take that personally I don't agree with, or I agree with and I voted the other way, because it, I, my seat is not, it does not belong to myself, it just doesn't. And I try really hard to remember that. In that particular bill, what are you going to do, right? What are you going to do when there's, there's failing infrastructure, and now you have, you know, some, some lots do sit right on top of the next one, and now there's going to be basically three housing units on one, what are you going to do? It's going to be too late, do you want to do that? All right, it's too late, sorry to you.
So, it's still a shot that won't get through the Senate?
I don't know, there is a chance it might not get through the Senate, I don't, I don't know. I don't know. Because in all honesty, I believe that the governor wants that. I believe that a lot of the, very few senators are from this little corner, right? So, I'm going to say, I'm going to go in a linear and say that that's going to pass the Senate, and it's going to be signed by the governor. Could be wrong, but we'll see. I don't think that I am though.
Who's another bill? I'm sorry to remember the number of it, number of it, but it was going to allow residential housing on the smallest lot that the ES determined could, could hold a septic system, so basically quarter acre lots. Do you know anything about that one? I'm sorry, I don't have the number.
Is that what you said to me? I can try to pull it up.
I'll look over there and see if I have, I have basically what we voted on last week over there.
So, that would not have been one of the ones you voted on then, because that was pretty striking.
I don't remember it.
I'll spell one, 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 three, one, 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 three.
My personal concern with that one is that we don't have confiscatory, in my opinion, zoning. We do have roughly sixty percent or thereabouts of the town in rural Ag, which is three acre zoning. Other towns have, like, Westmoreland has five and ten acre zones, which I personally think is confiscatory, but Keene just reduced their five to two. So, I think we're in line with three, but this could potentially take that, that aspect away.
Yeah.
And certainly, we have ample evidence around the lakes and ponds that quarter acres are sufficient to, to hold a septic system in a well. So, it really, it really does take away local control.
It does, it sure does.
I know I debated Jim McConnell multiple times on his amendment, constitutional amendment, which I really thought did just the opposite. I don't, I don't believe it created local control. I think it created state control with all the restrictions in there. This one, where land use essentially goes out the window.
Right, right.
If you would mind, just let Michael where that stands, that would be helpful.
Before I leave, I will double check and see, see if we did vote on it last week. I don't know, I don't know if we did or we didn't, but I will certainly find out. You know, the one thing that I'll just add, before I excuse myself from anything else, is I always say that the reason I live where I live is because I know it's like the way in the city. I don't, I don't want to live there. I don't want to live amongst all of that, the shopping, the people, I don't want to. That's why I live where I live. And I laugh and I say, you know, if you live, you know, if you live more where it's more rural, you know what it's like over there. That's why you don't live there, right? You go to doctor's appointments there, you know, depending on exactly what you need, that's where it's going to be located. But there's a better chance that the person living, and I guarantee you, the person living in Bedford has never been to, you know, this side of ninety-three, right? We don't have to live there to know, but they don't know what it's like to live here. So, it's very, very easy, right? Like, the covered bridge is a perfect example. I guarantee you, there's people in Nashville and Bedford that have never seen a covered bridge. They probably just haven't, they just, they just haven't. Not all of them, I'm sure some of them do their little tours, but there's a better chance than not that they have no clue. So, that's the problem that I have with a lot of that stuff. It's, it's very easy for you to say how we need to live, but you, you, you don't know. You don't know what, what it's like to live on the side of ninety-three, right? There's a reason we drive everywhere an hour and a half to get to Concord. I don't want to live in Concord. I'll, I'll drive to Concord very much, thank you, but I don't want to live there. And that's a battle, that's a battle. Same thing with Keene, right? God love you, but I don't live in Keene for a reason, I don't, I don't want to live in Keene. So, I don't, I don't want people in Keene telling people in Swansea how we have to build houses. I don't like, I don't like the idea of that.
Damn votes.
You aren't kidding. You aren't even kidding. But I will, I will certainly check on that one and see.
Two other quickies, and I'll preface this by saying, I could have misread how you voted, but it was questioned on a couple of votes.
Uh-oh.
Fourteen seventy-nine.
What was it?
Which was, NHMA at least saw it as would kill them in terms of legislative advocacy and lobbying.
I didn't vote for that.
Okay. Like I said, I prefaced it by...
Oh, oh, shoot, I was going to say, um, yeah, so...
Because it could be confusing, the ought to pass and the tables, and so, I could have been wrong.
So, there was actually two with that. The one was basically, basically lobbying efforts, right? So, the argument is supposed, the argument, the argument to pass that bill is that they don't want taxpayer money being used to lobby, right? So, they're trying to say, they are saying that if a town wants to participate and have fun to go to that, then to put it on is a warrant, or they want the town vote to see whether or not they're going to do it or not, or to designate a certain amount of money. But the other side of that is, there's a lot more than just the New Hampshire Municipal Association that, that has to lobby. And perfect example is the Chiefs Police Association, right? They come in front of, in front of our committee every time they're there, right? Every single time they're there. So, there's, there's a lot more to say than just that. One of the arguments was, well, fine, let them, let them fundraise. Well, you know what? You know, a lot of people say that about the fire department, let them fundraise. Well, yeah, they do fundraise, but why should people that are pretty good fighters have to stand by the side of the road and beg for money in boot, right? The towns have to have a fire truck. So, I see it on the other side. I see that there's, there's actually a lot of good. I know personally, me, me personally, in the role that I have, I call attorneys for the New Hampshire Municipal Association often.
Right, that's why I was, that doesn't seem right, so...
Yeah, yeah, I definitely did not vote to support that bill.
Okay, great. And then the other one was on the county budget? Did you vote against?
I voted no on the county budget.
And I was just curious if it had to do with the EMS part at all, because we had a presentation from them a couple of meetings ago, and it was very enlightening how great they're doing for us.
So...
So, I just wanted to relay that part.
It had a little bit to do with the EMS, but not totally. So, originally, when the EMS came about, I asked very specific questions, right? I wanted to know how many people that they thought they're unemployed, because they don't know. I asked how much, like, as far as equipment, right? What do you think? We don't know. So, to me, that was a lot of, let's find out later. I did, I did not like that. Now, granted, we are past that, but I also visit all of my towns, right? And I'm not speaking for every single town, which there was an accusation made that I was, and I'm not, but I have been to some towns that asked me to not vote, they asked me to vote no on that budget. And one of the things, I struggled with this, I did have inner conflict, and I'm going to tell you, be honest with you, sure. I met with the district attorney's office, and I sat down with them and said, is there anything that I can do for you, what do you need? And we talked about the need of an additional victim's advocate. So, I said, I'm going to do whatever I can to get you an additional victim's advocate. And I did, right? So, here I am, vote no on the budget, but I just put an additional, additional position in, so that was very hard for me. However, my intention to pay for that additional victim's advocate was with some items I would like to have seen come out of the budget. I was not successful in getting those things out of the budget. So, if the, if the position was not in the budget, there were not even any question, I would have been a hard one. But it was in there, and now I was left with a true conflict of what do I do? So, as an example, there was, there was in, and I don't have a problem with outside agencies like a lot of people do, I see a lot of good that the outside agencies do, but there was one particular outside agency that from when I first got elected till now, their, their budget request is doubled, right? One of them has, was asking for, like, I don't have it, it was like, it was like forty or sixty thousand dollars more than they'd ever asked for before, right? So, we have people who are working two and three jobs to, to feed their, their families right now, that's, that's just too big of a ask, that's just too big of a ask. There was some things that were in the nursing home budget that I took a lot, a lot of concern with, that I would like to have seen come out, which, nope, they wouldn't have it. And then there was one particular agency that was brand new, and when they first asked to basically come aboard, we drew some concern with it, and they said, no, you know, it's going to do some good, you know, all the reasons. And I said, look, we all know there's nothing more permanent than a temporary agency, and that's where it was supposed to be, was going to be temporary. Well, guess what? Their request doubled, their request doubled. And no matter what I did, I was, I was laughed at, I was made fun of, I was accused of wanting indentured servants, but that's not very insulting. All I was doing was bringing attention to where we could save taxpayers' money, and it was, it was not even considered, so I don't know.
I should say, at least, I think for the board too, but we don't know enough about the budget to know whether it was a good budget or not.
I'm sure, it's just good things, isn't it?
If the concern was about EMS part, I just wanted to relay that, I think we're pretty happy so far with how that's going, so I just want you to hear that.
The biggest problem I have with the EMS is even if towns are not using it, they're going to be paying for it.
Absolutely.
I do not see that it's going to be sustainable with, with what we've seen thus far, and where we're going, how it's going to be sustainable without, without all the towns having to So, there's that.
Hopefully, the interfacility transports will kind of offset the expense of running the nine more long calls. And they said they're doing a lot more transports than I, I think they had thought initially, so...
We're not...
And they're getting paid, you know, but it takes a while.
Yeah, I certainly expected it to take, to take more than a year, without a doubt. Quite honestly, I, I wasn't real, I wasn't real happy with the way the whole thing just kind of evolved. I did ask a lot of questions that were not answered, they just were not answered. And then it was, we need you to vote yes so we can move forward negotiations, but you're already moving forward negotiations, right? You know, you know, don't, don't, you know, all over my life, sometimes I'm saying, yeah, it's not, and that's kind of, just started off, just started off bad. It's like, start off with a giant trip, and it just kind of kept on following, it's like, well, it's on, but it's there now. So, I want it to succeed, it's there, it has to succeed, you know, failure is not an option at this point now.
It'd be catastrophic.
Especially if there's no one else.
Especially what?
If there's no one else.
Right.
So, when we're done with the Senate bills, and we see once one, and how it all shakes down, I'll come back and let you know what is officially passed, because right now, there's a whole lot of stuff thrown up in the air like the way it's towards laws. And then when it falls, I'll let you know.
So, the Senate bills you have now?
Yes.
Okay, and the Senate has the House bills?
Yes.
And then you're going to do reconciliation of some sort?
If, if needed, right. We'll go to committee of conference if we have to. I think those have to be out, I want to see if it's in June, I think they have to be out.
Before, end of May, I think, right? Because it's in June.
I actually think it's, I think it's in June, because I saw, I was looking last week when it said, like, the last day to sign off committee of conference bills, because I was hoping this year, I was probably going to be able to go on vacation or not. I'm like, well, can't go there, can't go there, can't go there, but, you know, thus far, you know, sometimes you already know what bills you're, you know, what bills are going to be like over in committee of conference. So far, we seem to be okay. I mean, I suspect the, the not more bill might, might go to committee of conference, others, and just get what they don't, and kind of tired arguing about it, but, you know, I don't know. See what they say. Might throw his back ass and say, ha, ha, there it is, and then, and then we'll have something happen. So, we shall see. Yeah, they have our bills, we have their bills. We're going to hear quite a few next week. Like I said, we're supposed to hear a couple today, and then we're going to vote on Friday, but now we're actually going to hear a bunch on Wednesday, and then vote on some on Wednesday, so.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I'll keep you posted, I'll come back whenever I have one.
Great.
Thanks, thanks.
I appreciate it, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I gave, I gave Michael the...
Chee-chee.
Yeah.
What did you run for last year?
Senate. Madam Representative.
Have you, first time you ever tried?
Yeah.
You going to try again?
No, she's not.
Do you mind jumping, jumping Ashley?
What is Ashley here for? I'm looking at the...
Vandalism.
Vandalism?
Yeah.
There's no vandalism on this agenda?
Happened...
Well, I wish it didn't happen at all the other, because we're going to have to see it.
Maybe kids show up, or you might have to disappear and go show up to them.
Yeah, one of the two, or it gets, we're going to go first.
Thank you. Where are my, where are my eclipse glasses? The thing's coming.
Yes, you have to go to the library.
No, oh, what, library?
No, the library is the one that's security, they just reached out to me to help promote and spread the word, and we saw you really good, and meet community gathering.
Gotcha.
So, some of them are double-sided, and these are all the way from November, and they're all dated on what day they were found, from November till Monday.
This is Brownfield.
This is Brownfield Memorial Field.
Brownfield.
Brownfield?
Uh, currently, the biggest...
Set over a lieutenant, what do you mean?
Yeah, currently, the biggest issue is they have officially broken into the back storage unit of the cook shack, they've broken the metal garage door, so they compromised that security. They then removed a ladder from inside the building and took it outside the building to break into the upper storage area of that storage section. They also then broke into the square booth again, and have scraped into the entire interior of the square booth, and have damaged all the electrical within that. And they're just really grateful they shoved electric off that last fall, when we started to have issues, because they could have probably been seriously hurt.
How recent was the last event of?
Monday.
Monday? And this is happening that night?
Six o'clock, nine o'clock dusk, there was a lady who witnessed them, that called the PD report what they saw Monday. We also have people in South Winchester Street who saw teams trying to jump fence into the Princeton property area Sunday afternoon.
Slide, can I see those?
Jump the fence back into Princeton property?
Yeah, so they're coming in from South Winchester, and they're avoiding the school altogether, because they know we're checking the school's cameras.
No cameras, yeah?
No, unfortunately, but I also, that's another thing.
That's why we're here.
That's why we're here. So, I was talking with Joe Deruso just about the different camera options. He had suggested these. They're a cellular set game camera that live streams to my phone or whatever device, has the apps right on it. It would be in real time. He suggested we look at two. It also shows the cost and the data plans, because they are cell-based. But with that, these could then be moved anywhere. We swear away with having a ground, and we stop having issues, but you know, we're having issues somewhere else. These could get relocated, and I have no issue having any one. They're gonna go to the PD, really, if we don't have a place to vote them at for that moment.
How many, how many cameras do we need?
Joe suggested two, and we've already kind of mapped out the two areas, but we'll bring the bucket truck in to install them. Just so that, these kids clearly are squirreling. They are climbing the top of the garage. They've thrown trash everywhere.
What did that, what is that?
So if you turn it the other way, that's the door jam that they broke right before the election. They kicked in the square booth door, and that's probably the third time we've now fixed that door jam. At least since I've been here.
So, what do we need for it?
Ideally, the issue is, is where things are positioned, on how far the poles are away from like where we're trying to angle. We really don't have much more need than two, just because the, like, light posts are not capturing that backside of the building, where we need to, or they're too far down that first baseline. They're doing a really good job avoiding anywhere around that school, because that school's camera can catch almost up to Route 10 through the playground. But they're coming in through, like, by the, I'm assuming by the museum.
What about some motion lights, too, that will light up when they're out there?
I'm honestly absolutely game to have any conversation about anything we think that should go out there, because I went out there this morning, going, please, 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 please have nothing wrong today, please.
So, these cameras, are they a little more like a game camera?
Yes.
We don't need a monitor or nothing like that? Because I just put installed cameras in my pocket, and I had to do monitor and head up in the cloud. So, these would be checked by you guys?
Yep. So it'd be synced right to my phone, and does store it in the cloud. If you look at the.
Oh, these are gonna be motion?
Yes. Yep.
And then how much do they store?
So if you look at the data plans, because they have, it's all based kind of on whatever data plan we want to choose. There are different ones. They're all based on a yearly thing. The lowest plan only, I think, holds like maybe three hundred photos a month. But in some of the bigger plans, they do get stored into the cloud for three hundred and sixty-five days.
Yeah.
So we'd be able to backtrack it also. Yeah.
Have you seen any pictures of these? Is it pretty, so we can identify?
If we do catch somebody, we can use it as identification.
You should check out Joe's dear photos.
Good.
Yeah, you can pick up some signs, you know, video cameras.
Do we think need signs out there?
I'd throw one on the building, just to be safe.
Okay.
What, that we have cameras now?
Yeah.
Because, do we want to try to catch them?
I mean, if we end up going to court over it, I'm sure somebody's gonna.
Well, that's why I didn't.
Try and throw it out for that reason, so.
That's it.
You mean that we didn't notify anybody that there's cameras that is feeling?
Yeah, I need anything to determine. They're pushing probably close to three grand.
I thought that too, but in the, I had some violence, and I started that route, then I really headed to the cameras. I tried that route, make believe. I put a phony one up.
Well, that's what we.
A blinking light on it, and I'll bet.
Didn't work.
No. They were smarter than me.
They stole it. They stole it.
They stole it. Alright, Mike, come on.
I, hey, honestly, these kids are just giving me a run for my money right now.
So do we want to make a motion to?
We have three of them in here now, so you can chew them out if you want. We still having problems with people using the oil fields as a dump?
Yes. Actually, when I went down to the east, I had to finally pull out trash bags for that event. Two of our recycling bins have already been moved from the little storage area we have them in, just because it's not kept away from the public, because we have a transition. Go get into it, it's very excellent here. Two of them got pulled out into fields, and then people were throwing market basket bags full of dog poo away in the bags, and they were obviously no bag in them, no cover on them, so they're filled with water. I did drag them up to the storage units, or up to the maintenance shed for the east, because that's clearly a very big biohazard, to kind of get it out of the way. But they also were cramming bags of dog poo in, like, we have the gray trash cans, and all the lids get stacked with each other, on top of usually trash cans that are flipped over. They were shoving them in the lids as well, in the storage area. So I haven't actually attempted to deal with that part yet. I gotta go down with some good equipment to handle.
Do we have this problem in the other ball fields, too?
Brown's not as bad. I have teenagers at Brown that I think maybe scare their dogs.
Well, I thought this was Brown's field.
No, I was talking.
Oh, he's talking about the Lanes Field, where we have the fully enclosed youth ball fields.
Yeah.
So people take their dogs down there to let them run loose, because it's all enclosed.
Got it.
The biggest issue usually is the dog poop. We haven't, I haven't ran into any other issues with people down there, but yes, they're clearly very active down there at this point. And we did, we put signs up that said, you need to take care of your dog, come after them, it's fine. I think if they're lying, putting it in something. But, we have talked with government about getting cameras down there, because they do have Wi-Fi. So that's something we're gonna look into as well.
Right.
Yeah. And we've got to, at this point, it's, we're quickly seeing that we've got to become proactive to prevent issues from getting there. Or at least deter them from happening.
What do you need for motion?
Motion or consensus. We just wanted you to be aware and make sure they pop up and.
I know it's pretty early, I don't think, like, we don't know when I'm going to be able to set, we book cameras up there.
So we don't need mine?
I think consensus is fine.
So basically, a four hundred dollar investment?
Ideally, yes. And the cell phone data plan is a yearly payment, but if we decide that we take them down and we don't need to put it, we don't need to renew it, but.
It's ninety bucks.
Well, exactly. That's kind of where I was at. They're not, it's not horribly expensive for the ability that they could be moved to pretty much anywhere, where we may have an issue, I feel like.
Right.
But I do think you should take in consideration what Michael said earlier about the motion lights. I think they're a good, good thing to happen when somebody, when they approach it, they get lit up, and then they say, ah, heck with this. And it might not let them do the damage. Like a camera, if they don't see it, they're gonna do the damage, and.
Yeah.
Great, we caught them, but they did the damage.
Exactly.
I think Mike's idea is, we might stop it ahead of time by that thing lighting up, and they're saying, well, they can see me from the road now, you're gonna kick the door in.
Yeah.
Right? So I think you should put that in.
Indoor, indoor improve the, what you get on the cameras, too, versus dirt.
Sure, because we could always do something that would.
Even better, Michael.
Towards the parking lot, where we already need to get up and fix the fiberglass.
I would definitely, and they're cheap. Motion lights are cheap.
We can definitely look at that.
Yep. Yeah, see what you're thinking.
Yeah. Do you want to talk about the neutral series?
Sure, yeah, just, I think it's a broader discussion, like we talked about, but.
Definitely. So just so you guys know that I'm getting requests like this. So, currently in Richardson Park, we only allow Swansea residents, Swansea taxpayers and property owners, employees of the town, and then guests that are staying in inns and hotels, or otherwise approved by the select board. I've had an individual reach out who is not, who lives up here. Sometimes they own a property on South Road, but they're looking to do like short-term rentals, but not up in here. Would like to be able to promote the use of the beach as like part of the rental. I have been turning away the campgrounds from using the beach, just because it wasn't in this, and we get it full really fast. I didn't know what we thought about opening that up to the possibility of short-term rentals, or Airbnbs, and people are bringing those into the town. If we wanted to deem that as an inn or a hotel, or if that's a completely different category.
It's a broader discussion.
Exactly. So just throwing that out there, that if you guys want to contemplate over that, and see where we want to maybe want to go with that. But, just so you know, the beach is coming, so they're, they're gonna start coming. I have a feeling if we've already got one in town, that's kind of along this mindset, there might be more. But, people are excited. The beach looks nice now.
It's a good place to be.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you all for joining me.
Thank you. You want your pictures and your camera stuff?
If you guys want to keep them, you're more than welcome to. I've got so much.
Michael will probably want this.
She's got the originals.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
If you want.
Yeah, South Road speed limit.
Do you want me to draw you two sets out of that one?
Sure.
Well, so as all of you may have known, we talked about this the last time, where we changed the passing zone. South Road changes right at Put Lane, which is the like first entrance coming from Route 12, at the ball fields, from a thirty to a forty. So we got rid of at least the passing zone in front of the ball fields, but we're still going from a forty mile an hour zone all the way through down to thirty-two. So they're also coming up thirty-two, and not slowing down till after they've now passed the ball fields. Fully, where it's a state discussion. We did have a resident in the area who's voiced their concern, and just has had an issue kind of making the meeting time and things like that. But I do stand with her, and that I do think it is a concern, and if we can open up that discussion with the state somehow. I know, I feel like they did an evaluation, I think the last time we had that discussion, about everything, but, even if they could just put it after Mill Lane, that it turns to a forty. So we've got that, whatever road frontage we have, where we've got those ball fields right there. But we do have community concern for that.
Fortunately, what they do, basically, is they look at how fast people are going now, and they say, oh, they're going forty-five miles an hour, so forty's right. Which is, I get their logic, but.
I totally agree with their thought, they would. Yeah, I just wish they would see what's right there. As one of the dugouts on the Lane Field dugout, literally the first base dugout entrance right onto the road right there.
And unfortunately, they park on that side of the road with the ball fields, right?
They can't anymore. There's no parking signs, all up and down South Road. The state also put that in with the removal of the passing zone.
Yeah.
So hopefully, we have.
I think what he's saying is they're not parking across the street from the ball field.
Right. And they're gonna look at that, you know, why is it, this kid's not, shouldn't be out in the street, you know, and stuff like that. And it's really difficult to get them to change the speed limit sign, especially that, I drove that, it's a straightaway. It's, and it's amazing how they go to thirty on the.
Oh, I guess, I feel you very much with that. So, just, she had her concerns, so I was glad to kind of bring that for her, for anybody here. Now, we can help you.
Thank you.
I would agree.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. What's your pleasure on that?
I just, I think it's beating the dead house. I don't think they're gonna, I don't think as much as we put into this, that we're gonna get the results that they want. I think we're gonna put a lot of time into it, and it just ain't gonna pass. From what I know, you know what I mean about, do you feel that it's a tough thing to change?
Yeah, I mean, we did it with Homestead Ave, and it was.
And it wasn't successful, yeah. And that was, that looked like it would be changed more than this one.
Right.
Right? So that tells you in itself that.
Yeah.
I think we're gonna put him through a lot of work over nothing. As much as it would be nice, but we gotta be.
I disagree. I think at the very least, we.
Send the letter?
Absolutely. We've, we've got a resident who's expressed a complaint. We obviously know the ball fields are the concern. I just was thinking, you know, a kid walks across, and what's the answer? The answer, DOT said, no, they won't do it, and.
Good idea.
You know, Frank Lenenberger, you explain to the family how that child got killed. But if we don't do this, then I think it puts us in the same position. So I think we gotta at least explore it. Want to send the letter?
Fair enough. Send the letter.
There's a whole bunch of work on our end.
No, not too bad. It's more, it's more giving people false hope, I think, like we had with the other one.
They're gonna do a traffic study.
What if we're surprised, but what if, what if they do, and Bill would be like, wow, this is great, we did it, right?
He might bump it to fifty, that's what he said.
Right.
Whereas we're old, but I just think we have to go through the, and make the pitch, get Jennifer.
What about science bill?
They won't, they just stay road.
No.
That's a different issue.
Okay.
Probably got eighteen's trying to cross a covered bridge, because GPS takes them that way, and there's no sign saying thirty-five hundred pound limit, or whatever it is. That was a question I was gonna ask, it was battery packs with the electric vehicles.
Oh, for Jennifer?
Yeah.
She'll be back. All right, thank you.
What in order, Mr. Jarrett, what in order, Mr. Jarrett, was that a motion or just consensus on the letter?
Consensus, I think will do it.
Thank you.
Right. Item B, requests for submissions to the state ten-year plan for transportation improvement projects.
So this is something that happens every two years, the state updates their plan. The last update just got approved by the governor earlier this year. And SWRPC is soliciting if communities have projects, so I, obviously, we got that letter, which I've included, and just wanted to get the board's thoughts on if we want to pursue anything, or take this year off. We did get the priority plan for the region last year, priority project last year, for the Route 10 traffic calming and pedestrian improvements. So, are we gonna get it two years in a row, or two times in a row? Maybe not, but. Just want to get your thoughts.
Any thoughts? What's our best approach?
So my two ideas were, last year, Keen, or last time, Keen approached us about Bay Hill Road, which it was questionable whether it applied or not. And it didn't end up getting put forward by the committee, and I just checked in with Don Lucier with the city, and he said they discussed it again, but he didn't think it would rise to the top for them. So if they're not willing, I think it's a stretch anyway, probably. So that one's probably out. And then my other idea was to try to do some pedestrian improvements in the Route 12, Lake Street, thirty-two area.
For all the apartments and stuff.
Existing and new apartments, and we have some sidewalk infrastructure, but there's some gaps. So, might be a way to do a, do a bigger project versus these little stretches here and there, like we've been doing on Sories Crossing, different things. And even if we do some legwork and it's not successful.
We'd have to work with Keen on Bay Hill Road, right?
I think, yeah, they don't seem too interested in it, so I don't think that one will probably go.
Bay Hill Road is terrible, but it's, and that's the cutoff. I mean, people use it every day to cut off the rotary and all that. And you drive down there, you see the chunks taken right out of telephone poles, trees, and trucks. They look like they're getting chopped down. I'm waiting for one to fall down. But, the last one was in front of Gamalos and all in that area.
Correct, yep. Scheduled for twenty thirty-four or something.
How many of us will be here in twenty thirty?
Twenty thirty-three.
Twenty thirty-three, you got a chance.
We got a little chance. Might have a walk for you.
So what do you think, twelve and thirty-two, and Lake Street? There you go.
All right.
You got what you wanted.
Thank you.
I don't know if he wanted it. He's given his ideas, right?
All right. Item C, request for permission to conduct archaeological work on town-owned map two eighteen, Lot ninety-three, which is the parking area to the north of Sories Crossing, Crescent Bridge.
Exactly. So that's Dr. Goodby with Franklin Pierce. He's been our subconsultant on a few projects before. He's a good partner, so I think, I think it's a.
Test holes, right?
Yep. And then they fill them in.
Yeah, I read the whole thing on how they do it and stuff, but I don't see no problem with that.
And we have the option to retain some of the artifacts in the museum if.
Is that automatic, that we do have the first option, if they find some?
Yeah, that one, that's what he wrote. But then they're hopeful that we would convey it to the school.
Or let them study it further.
Nice to find an old arrowhead, huh? So we gotta make a motion for, to accept it as drafted?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Any old business town meeting follow-up?
That's needed.
We'll go into non-public, by the looks of it?
Sounds good.
Which one you want to do first?
A for the dismissal, promotion, or compensation.
Make a motion for non-public, to move it to non-public. I'll make a motion, and we move it to non-public? Under A.
Second. Karazinski.
Aye.
Hutwalker. Tempesta.
Hi. Sorry. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Beverly, I'll.
Any more public input before you leave?
You have some good work.
All right.
Beverly, I can, if you give me the templates, I can draft up these minutes.
Okay, I'll send them to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you.